Five after we're a little late today. This meeting will be conducted in person in Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A, section four oh three B, two D, and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules and Procedures as amended and adopted May third, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight nine seven three six eight two five one three two and password nine six one seven eight nine or via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under government city council slash contact the council. Would you please all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd join me for a moment of silence, please? And now roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole is excused for he'll be absent actually for the next couple of weeks. Counsel Henselman.
Present.
Counsel Martell.
Present.
Counsel Tranchmontaine.
Present.
Counsel Hitchcock.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink and also present our city manager Steve Buck and executive assistant Larissa Ricketts. And let's move on to the minutes. We have the minutes of twenty-two, three, eight dash zero one in order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on May sixteenth, 2023. Do I have a motion? Anne?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
And a second. Pete?
Second.
And all those, are there any comments or questions, corrections? No? All those in favor? Is he unanimous? And the next one is, your hand down now?
Yeah, so my eye, I was like, I just saw.
Okay. See, I'm gonna call on her no matter what. Twenty-three, two, three, nine, dash, zero, one in order to approve the minutes from executive session of the city council held on May sixteenth, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Yes. Jonathan? And do I, everyone approve? Thank you. And twenty-three, two, four, six, dash, zero, one in order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held May thirtieth, 2023. Do I have a motion? Yes, Anne?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
And do I have a second? Yes, Pete?
Second.
And any questions? All those in favor? Excellent. There were no subcommittees and there is no mayor's report, so let's move right on to the manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Just a moment, I'll pull that up on the screen here. Legislative updates. The first item that I have is part one of the state budget, which was LD four twenty-four. That was been, has been passed, previously passed by legislature and has been signed by the governor and becomes effective on June twenty-ninth of 2023. Significant savings or wins for municipalities in that the budget included the state's share of fifty-five percent under essential programs and services for our schools, the full five percent per state municipal revenue sharing, excuse me, and the increased reimbursement levels of three percent per year for the $25,000 homestead to be seventy-nine percent for this year. It also funded, for the first time, the senior property tax stabilization program. So those are all very positive elements for us. In the part two budget, which is LD two fifty-eight, which I can't understand why part one is four twenty-four and the other is two fifty-eight, but anyways, the governor recommended the use of, there's $223 million in reserves and an additional $71 million in previously unanticipated revenues that are now projected. So elements of municipal interest are increased funding to address housing shortages. There's various bills on that. There's the replacement of the pine tree development zones with the Dirigo Business Incentive Program and a one-time inclusion of $50 million for school revolving loan funds. The bill also includes $31 million for funds for failing EMS services. There's revenue sharing projections increased by nineteen point five million to two hundred and fifty-three million in fiscal year twenty-four and increased by twenty-seven point five million to two hundred and sixty-one million in fiscal year twenty-five. So those are all very positive aspects. The only municipal impact that I find on the negative side is jail funding in each of those two years were held flat. So no increase, they were looking for a $3 million increase for fiscal year twenty-four and four and a half million for fiscal year twenty-five. That was not part of the package. Senior Property Tax Stabilization, LD one thirty, boy, this is a wild card. Initially started to report to you that it was going to be replaced with a $75,000 homestead exemption. I have to pull that out as that's no longer the case. That option was nixed this past week. As of last Friday, that was, that was the derivation, but now that is gone. So the latest derivation that's out there to replace the senior property tax deferral, so they funded it for this year, the program will go forward. For next year, that senior property tax stabilization will be gone. And they want to replace it with two elements. They want to look at the property tax deferral program, so that's a current, currently existing program. They want to increase that from forty thousand to eighty thousand dollar income levels and assets from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. Then a qualifying property owner could defer payments of taxes with the state holding a lien to recoup cost plus interest if and when they either are no longer eligible or at the time of sale. And then there's the other program, so they're bringing back the, well, let's see, a second I'm standing for here, I'm sorry. The property tax fairness credit, which currently is at fifteen hundred dollars, but you have to file an income tax form with the main state revenue. They want to increase that from fifteen hundred dollar allowance to $2,000 allowance based upon income eligibility at the time of the tax filing. So again, that would be a tax credit. So the difficulty that I see with that second program is it could have equally as good a benefit, but people generally don't relate it directly to the property tax, right? So they're gonna pay the property tax, they're gonna file someplace else under revenue sharing, under revenue services, get a $2,000 credit towards that, but not relate the two. And other times, we've seen people that don't use the program properly, they'll come in and try to file for poverty abatement because they have the inability to pay the taxes, but they never apply that credit towards their taxes. So a win in that the municipality is not gonna be managing the senior property tax stabilization program in its current form, which was gonna be very time-consuming to manage. And now it shifts over to main revenue services, but there's that disconnect, one benefit versus property tax burden, so. But it's still being debated. Who knows what next week will look like? The next is LD fourteen ninety-three, which is enact increased affordable housing by expanding tax increment financing. I actually asked for this legislation to be drafted and it was sponsored through Maine Municipal Association. It sought to give higher allowances for tax increment financing to be wrapped around workforce housing and/or low-income housing. The original bill as drafted looked for exclusions from the five percent exemptions. Those have been removed. It looked for a host of other things as far as the Tiff Districts allowances. Those have been removed. The biggest disappointment is that it asked for the state to participate in, in the local incentivization of workforce housing in that, that they would, no different than a pine tree development zone, they would give up the sales tax on the materials that went into the project. They have stripped that out. So I find that ironic that the state constantly is beating the drum. We have to do anything and everything we can to incentivize housing, but the state's not going to participate because they've stripped that out. They would have given it up in the short term to get the long-term benefit. So keep that in, in mind when we're working on such initiatives, who's a partner and who is not, excuse me. Today's been a bad day for me for allergies. All right. The next one, the next bill is LD two thousand and three. We all know that is the Affordable Housing Bill, the increased housing density and such under that. The state has just completed the rulemaking that was supposed to have been done a year ago, so they've handed that to us. They have allocated the funding towards reimbursing municipalities for adopting all of their ordinances towards this. But bear in mind, we couldn't do that until they finished the rulemaking. The rulemaking just came out last week. The majority report wants to hold us all to the fact that we need to implement this by July first. They just issued the rulemaking. The funding is there, but they haven't figured out who they're gonna pay and how they're gonna pay it and what they're going to pay, nor did they develop the advisory office that was supposed to give us guidance and assistance on how to implement this in our ordinances. So it's still a mess. I won't bother you with any of the further details on that, but we are tracking that. There was, the managers group met this morning by Zoom with our regional planning office and, and everybody's just put their hands in the air. They can't, they can't figure it out. So they, they're still looking at the delay in this. There may be a six-month delay for city council format of government. There may be a twelve-month delay for town meeting format, form of government, or there may be no delay at all. And then the LD two thousand and three police will have to come cuff us in the night and drive us off, so we'll see how it goes. River Street Construction, Leveque Construction has started the reconstructive activity on River Street. They started on May thirty-first. You'll see signs out there. Currently, they're working in between High Street and Cottage on River Street. They're closing that road completely from six-thirty AM to five PM. They are allowing local traffic. They're maintaining the flow into the businesses on that piece of roadway. So this will be the pattern that they'll be doing all summer as they're progressing down River Street. Rather than try to maintain one-way traffic, which is more timely and expensive for them, only being able to work in half of the width of the road, especially when they're doing cross pipes and such under that, they're gonna close it by blocks. So you'd be able to detour around each block, local traffic only during, in that impacted area and construct as they go. And that's been timed. They've coordinated that with the school department, with Legmere Busing, the school department, both regular school programming and summer school programming. They coordinated that with York County Transportation and a whole host of other entities to lessen the impacts as much as possible. And we have had a, an applicant now, that's a viable applicant that we will interview next week for the construction inspector. We have a recent engineering graduate, which is exactly what we were looking for. Individual is coming out of UMaine. So we know our current director came out of New Hampshire, so we won't, you know, we're looking for a UMaine graduate, so, so we'll interview that person next week. Also, Transportation Pedestrian Safety Grant. This is a couple of years old now, but our assistant engineer Matt Proventure is finalizing the full design and submission to the main department of transportation. This was a safety grant that we, we received to do pedestrian crossing safety improvements, signage, crosswalk designs and such under that. So Matt has had to individually engineer each one of those intersections, find sign, sign placements and such, signage as appropriate design, all of those. He submitted that to the department and once they sign off on that, we can order the signage and get those installed this year. We are also, the department is also working, aside from the RACE grant, but we're also working on the Safe Streets for All grant. We received $200,000 in that first award. We have $20,000 we're putting towards that. That is, so the department has issued an RFP for Engineering Services specifically to do a comprehensive safety analysis for all of Sanford's streets, there are intersections, pedestrian crossings and such under that. Once that engineered workbook is produced, we can assign the priorities to each one of those improvements that need to be made and we can extract from that book each year, year on, year after year and apply for the SS four A. There's gonna be $5 billion per year, each in the next five years put into that, and we can apply for funding for reconstructive activity. So for example, the intersection of, of Graham Street and Graham Road, a constant point of contention and such under that, that would be one of our highest priorities in that because previously we thought our, from this, the first three would be School Street, Route Four, the bridge on Route Four, which is too narrow, and also Alumni Drive as it intersects with Jagger Mill and Route Four. But because of the work with, with our department and, and main department of transportation, all three of those projects are currently under design and in MDOT's plan book. So this is, this, this will be a huge leapfrog over and above those three high priority projects. The last element, the next element that I have here is the general assistance in asylum seekers. With much sadness, we have a thirty-year employee, John, you know him as Randy, John Randy White, has resigned his position as General Assistance Director for the city. John, after retiring from the Sanford Police Department, has been the city's GA director for the past thirteen years. We will miss his professional administration of that department and he will be missed sorely. He is a tremendous asset for the city and for the people for which he worked with. The current number of asylum-seeking families in Sanford has not increased, but their time in qualifying for short-term housing solutions of a hotel room is nearing an end. Most of the applicants that the city's worked with directly, their, their funding will run out on housing, for housing vouchers between June eleventh and June fifteenth, so that's coming up next week. Many of those are housed at the Sanford Inn and/or the Quality Inn. Even though the families or individuals qualifying for monthly general assistance for an extended period, the use of their monthly housing allowance when used in the hotel room under that price structure causes a gap as far as housing. So in other words, if a family of, of five has the monthly housing allowance of a thousand and sixty-four dollars assigned to them, if they use that in a hotel situation, that would get them anywhere from five to eight days of housing and then they're out. They have no more funding. If we can find them a housing situation where they can use that for monthly rental, then you can get them housed for that thirty-day period, after which they qualify for another thirty-day period. So each thirty-day period, they can get that maximum allowance. But again, if used in a hotel setting, it runs out mid-month and then they're, they're looking for housing. Our partner.
Steve, that's, that is the same as anyone who is unhoused.
It's the same as anyone, yes.
Okay.
That is the same. York County Community Action has assigned housing navigators to each of the twenty-eight families and is working with them individually, trying to seek a more cost-effective housing situation for which they can put their monthly housing allowance towards their, keeping a roof over their head consistently. We will know more on that as of Thursday. I did talk with Megan Arisberger today. She indicated that at least ten families have, have identified permanent housing placements of the approximately twenty-eight families. So we're not managing all twenty-eight families through general assistance. There's some other families here in our community that are being housed in other situations and didn't come through GA. But that being said, there's still ten, ten families out of the twenty-eight have identified housing, so.
And Steve, because of summer happening and tourists coming to our community, the hotels are now unwilling to rent those rooms because they're renting them out.
Correct.
Because that's their business.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's that. So, but that still wouldn't, it still wouldn't prevent somebody under a self-directed housing search to say that they want to use their monthly housing allowance in a hotel setting. It's just economically, that only works for, you know, five to eight, possibly ten days. And then the funding's completely used and they're, they're unhoused at that point. The last element that I'll bring to your attention is Haybrook Bridge. Many of the long-term councilors are very familiar with this topic. Currently, at the town of Alfred, they recently held a public hearing on May thirtieth on the discontinuance of the Stone Road, which is in Alfred and it leads to the centerline of Haybrook Bridge with our Burnia Road connecting. The bridge, it's technically a minor span. It is jointly owned by Alfred and Sanford and being a minor span, that joint ownership requires that each municipality put funding into that on a fifty, fifty-fifty basis. Our Public Works Director, Matt Hill, represented the city at the hearing and presented the legal position from the city's attorney, needing Alfred to recognize the city of Sanford as an abutter and for damages due to the proposed closure. The city has had an agreement from 2012 to raise the funds and replace the minor span. Alfred reneged on that agreement. Sanford incurred maintenance costs and engineering costs associated with the 2012 agreement for which Alfred did not participate. Under Maine law, Title twenty-three, five, sixty-four, there is a shared cost of fifty-fifty for the minor span Alfred refuses to fund. City has further asserted that it is an abutter to the Stone Road discontinuance. The Stone Road and the Burnia Road intersect in the middle of the span. So we are in a abutter and therefore damages are due. The city has documented and presented that to the town of Alfred, that we have sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars in engineering and repair work for which they did not participate. And pursuant to the now closure of the bridge, because of the condition, we spent an additional twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents in closure cost with barricading, negotiating an easement, creating a bullhead and turnaround there so that solid waste trucks and our plow trucks could get out there as well. So there is a three-step process for the town of Alfred to discontinue a road. First was to, for the town selectmen to authorize an order to do the process. The second step was the public hearing that was held on the thirtieth to raise that to the attention of the public and, and take under consideration any dialogue that's there. And the third step of that is to see at their town meeting, their annual town meeting, if the legislative body of the town meeting format will uphold the municipal officers' order, which currently calls for the disconting of the Stone Road as per the municipal officers' order and appropriate zero dollars to pay damages as, quote, "the abutters have waived any claim for damages." We are on record for claims of damages. So I'll keep you posted as to what further takes place with that matter.
What, what is the date of their, do we have that yet?
June seventeenth, I think.
Okay, so soon we'll find out about that. All right.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yes, Anne.
Steve, on the Safe Streets for All comprehensive safety analysis, will there be opportunity for public input or a presentation workshop style where we'll be able to have public input?
Yes. So they'll, they'll produce the, the workbook. There'll be an opportunity to lend public input in, while they're producing the workbook of all of the assessments and such under that. And then I would anticipate there would be further input as far as prioritizing which of those identified projects should rise to the top first. They would then extract and apply for funding.
Matt, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. The SS four A grant, one of the most important parts of it actually is public process and engaging those that might not otherwise be engaged regularly, so serving the end or served. That's a, that's a key part of the, the grant process.
Thank you very much. Steve, I always feel like I need to have a quiz after your report, especially the second session, second area where you had all those figures in there. It was huge. And I'd like to also point out, because of Steve's report, you can tell in the next couple of years, the face of Sanford is gonna change tremendously and it's gonna be phenomenal. So stay tuned, lots of, even beyond what he just mentioned, lots of stuff is happening. So it's an exciting time in Sanford's history. All right, moving right along. We're gonna do communications and presentations. Twenty-three, two, three, seven, dash, zero, one. Recognition of Outstanding Contributions to Law Enforcement Award to the Sanford Police Health, Mental Health Unit by the Maine Chief Police Association. And who's presenting this? Craig?
Chief Anderson.
The Chief Anderson? He hates it when we, he hates it when we do that.
That's why you have to.
Hi, everyone. I'm Craig Anderson. I represent the police department tonight. And yes, we wanted to let you know, the city manager wanted us to let you know, that the mental health unit received an outstanding contribution to law enforcement award at the recent May eighteenth Maine Chiefs of Police Association banquet, awards banquet. This evening, in attendance with us is Officer, well, actually, actually Acting Sergeant Colleen Adams. She's here with her two daughters. And Lacey Bailey, our Sweetsir partner, is with us on Zoom. Not with us is Officer Mike Gordon and our mental health first responder Shannon Bentley as well. The four of them make up the team. They did an outstanding job and I just want to read some of this to you briefly. The MHU has proven to be an essential resource for our team and the community in 2022, responding to six hundred and twenty-six crisis-type calls, interacted with a hundred and seven people experiencing homelessness and assisted in placing sixty-two of the hundred and seven in some form of housing or shelter. A hundred and twelve people in the administration of naloxone and tracked forty-five instances where naloxone was utilized to prevent an overdose death. The unit conducted multiple trainings and public engagements in an effort to highlight awareness and resources available to people in need. The MHU supports the overall mission of the police department by providing excellent law enforcement service. For all the reasons stated above, the Sanford Police Department's Mental Health Unit, which consists of Colleen and Mike, Shannon and Lacey, received the Outstanding Contribution to Law Enforcement Award.
Thank you.
What, what I'm sure they would like me to tell you and what I'm going to tell you is that it's not, they will tell you, it's not about them. It's about a team. It's about working together as a team. Think you've heard us say multiple occasions when one of the law enforcement representatives from the police department have been up here, that nobody accomplishes anything by themselves. And this is a great example of that. It highlights the community involvement. It highlights the support that the city council has provided to us. Without your support, we wouldn't have a mental health unit. Without Chief Bob McKenzie from Kennebunk Police Department, we wouldn't have the Sweetsir representative, who is now Lacey Bailey. He generously allowed, sent her to us, for, for us to house her several years ago. We wouldn't have Shannon Bentley. We wouldn't have Mike and Colleen in those positions. In addition to that, when we talk about being one team, like one city team, we're supported by the fire department and Chief Susie and his crew, his, his working crew. We cooperate intricately with them when we come to similar cases that have, that rise to the occasion, folks suffering from a mental health event or someone who's suffering from a, from a substance use event. And, and it's not just the fire department. Matt Hill and the, and the Department of Public Works, with Pete, have supported us when we've done cleanups at homeless sites and they've supported us when they, we've done cleanups around the city. So what we're really trying to highlight here is it's a team effort for the city. We, you know, we can dig in this a little bit deeper, as Steve likes to say, and drill down, right? If you drill down, we're supported by HR because they help us hire the people we need to hire. We're supported by finance with Ronnie and Tracy, who pay the bills so we get the things done, right? Like, we all work together. And I don't know that that gets highlighted enough or how important that is. You guys have a great team. Thank you for, for, for being there for us all. And I just want to show this, I'll, I'll send it down. It's the actual plaque that each of the officers have received. That happens to be Colleen's, but Mike and Shannon and Lacey also received theirs as well.
That's a fantastic-looking plaque.
And you guys all looked great in the photo.
Did you want to talk to Colleen?
Well, I think that Colleen should come on up and hold her plaque along with her two daughters who are here, so we can take some pictures and maybe you would like to be a part?
Well, I think, I think they will look spectacular without.
So come on up, bring your daughters up and we'll pass the plaque right down and you can hold that.
I have to do it under one of my partner's.
Yeah. And they're all at home thinking, boy, are we glad we didn't come.
This is for your memory book.
Does anyone, do you guys have a cellphone to take a picture? Oh, we got it. We got it covered. Face this way. Face this way.
Anne's good at capturing moments. I have a little series. All right, I'll pick the best one.
All right. Thank you and thank your team. Fantastic.
Mayor Brink, always going after the kids.
If I could, Madam Mayor. So I want to put credit where credit is due and this is why I wanted the chief to present tonight, not, not myself, to ask them to come up here and get the recognition, is that it was, it was the team of people. I can remember under a different chief, a different administration, and talking with now DC Small, hey, we got a problem. We're seeing something we haven't seen before. There's some issues out there. The council liked to have it addressed, right? So it started with that small impetus, but what I want to point out is they looked around, who is doing what, didn't, didn't, didn't try to reinvent the wheel, but by close examination of who is doing what, they quickly grasped onto that and they developed a model under its, under its own, which is now the envy of the state and they're being looked at for the work that they've produced. And I think that work, I don't think, I know that work came from the engagement that I see within the department and the ability for the department to embrace those that are in the know, their boots on the ground, working with the individuals on the street. And I'm so proud of the fact that they take, they, they address the issue at the point source to get at recidivism by having our, our officers, they engage the people, they know the people. I'm proud that our city has been able to muster the resources, that we're big enough to put the resources to this and behind this, but we're small enough to know each individual's names and what their, their needs are and where they are in the progress of coming off the street and getting into housing. So I want to thank the unit for their very exceptional work and recognize where that work came from. It was from within the department. It wasn't here. It was, it was us supporting their activity from a funding perspective and making sure that they have what they need to, to get the work done. So thank you very, thank you very much and job well done.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we'll move on.
I think you're not questioning anymore.
Anyone, any other comments? Okay, we'll keep going. All right, do we have any public participation? Any hands up online? For anything that's not on the agenda? Nothing there? Okay, we'll keep on going. Under public hearings, it's 23, 206-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the following license requests. I'm going to open a hearing. The first one is the renewal application submitted by Top Cut Cultivation LLC for a medical cannabis growers cultivator license at 12 Samata. Did I get that right this time?
It's Adams backward.
It's Adams backward. Ah, nice. Drive in Sanford, Maine. Any comments? Any for, any against? Hearing is closed. Open the next hearing, 23, 23501. Open the hearing, a public hearing to take public comments on resolution authorizing the city to issue its revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed. And I think I've got this right at the top. It's wrong. All right, so this amount has been changed from what's in print. It's $1,110,000. Did I get that right? Pursuant to the provisions on the Finance Authority of Maine Act 10 MRS Section 961. And I have no idea what that next thing means.
Nsequencho.
Nsequencho, okay, thank you. To finance the project as set forth. Any comments for? Any comments against? Oh, one moment. We got Diane?
Yes, can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I can, thank you.
I have a question about this item, if I may. This bond, is this the same bond that the people okay to cap at 1 million? Or is this a different type of bond?
No, this is a different bond. Steve, you want to explain?
Yes, we have bond counsel here tonight that can give you all of the details. And also in the packet, there's a very good frequently asked questions brochure on, on what this tax exempt bond is and why we're going forward with this. So this is not a bond that falls under the recent amendment, Diane, for the emergency and/or non-emergency bonding capacity of the city council.
Thank you very much for your explanation.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? All right, hearing closed. The consent agenda, I, if there are no comments on the consent agenda, then I declare unanimous the consent for this. Moving on, that's all I have to do for that part?
Very much.
Okay, good. Old business. 23, 201-01, in order to approve the contract zoning agreement between the city of Sanford and Nassau Development 1 LLC for property located at tax map parcel R5-91, R5-94, and R5-70.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second? Pete?
I second.
Thank you. And any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
You know, you could have zoomed. I told them to tell you to zoom in.
We're so glad you drove all the way here.
The young developers are here.
It was a lovely ride. Moving right along, under new business, 23, 217-01, in order to make appointments to the Sanford Springvale Development Corporation Board. And if you'll hold on, let me pull that paper. You had in your packet, you had the bylaws for this and we are, what I've got to propose we do is that we develop a committee to take a look at the people and this, this thing, the bylaws, to make sure we're matching up with it. I do have one counselor who, are you still volunteering to be on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. That I would like to appoint to this committee and to help us look at this and to, we've got, I think we have several people who want to be on it. We just have to make sure they all meet the qualifications. So I would like to point Nate to this board or have somebody make a motion.
So we, so we want to appoint Nate to the Sanford Springvale Development Corporation as the city council representative?
Yes.
And then you want to have three city counselors sit and look? Do you want to just use the appointments committee for the rest of it?
Bob might not be here, so I would say the three, where we're appointing him to it.
He can help us.
The two of us are on it and then you could help us develop that.
Okay.
And then we could also get some input probably from Steve.
He's also named by, he's also named by position.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that our city council representative to the Sanford Springville Development Corporation be Nathaniel Hitchcock.
All those in favor?
Yes, you are.
And could I have a second motion to put this to the committee to appoint along with Larissa and Steve and this committee to take a look and appoint? Pete?
I second that.
Well, you.
I got to appoint it?
Yeah, you make the motion.
Make the motion. Well, that's what I want to do.
And Jonathan will second it. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. All right. 23, 22701, in order to appoint Holly Gooch, and I, hopefully I got her name.
Polly Gooch?
Gooch, to the Sanford Arts Commission pursuant to section 205.1 of the Sanford City Charter. Do I have a motion, please? Anne?
So move, Madam Mayor.
And do I have a second? Nate?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? And I would like to point out to the arts committee that they need to develop, and I think it's a charter? Is that what there's?
Bylaws.
Bylaws? Bylaws, because we can't appoint anybody else until we have those bylaws. And we don't know if they're going to include people who could be outside of Sanford because, like, the airport advisory committee does have some people who don't live in Sanford. So we need to know just what their plan is. So if they would develop that, we would really appreciate it so we can move ahead because we do have some other people who want to be on this committee. So thank you. Any other questions on that? We all set? Okay. 23, 234-01, resolution in order to authorize insurance of revenue bonds, what?
Issuance.
Oh, issuance. I thought it was spelled wrong. Thank you very much. Of revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed. And this is, this is correct here, but wrong up above. That's why I had to correct it up there. This is 1,110, oh, it is still wrong, thousand. There should be one more zero in there. Pursuant to the provisions of the Finance Authority of Maine Act 10 MRS Section 961 to finance the project as set forth. Do I have a motion, please? Pete? Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
More? And all those, any questions?
Could I, could I just ask, we have bond counsel, Jim Safian, Attorney Safian is on the conference. If he could just give an explanation as to what this tax exempt status borrowing means and that it's not a debt or liability to the city, please.
Yes.
Thanks for having me. And on behalf of York County Community Action Corporation, thanks for considering this proposal. So just to be clear, there is already in place an existing 2013 revenue bond, already outstanding, that the city issued 10 years ago. We're now in the process of refinancing that with a similar revenue bond financing also to be placed with TD Bank, who was the lender on this transaction. I think the manager mentioned in your packets, you have a FAQ, a frequently asked questions outline of what this type of financing is. But just to confirm, it is a, it is not a liability of the city of Sanford. It's a liability of York County Community Action. They'll be responsible for repaying it. The city plays an important role because they provide a conduit access into the tax exempt market. So this is a fairly common pass-through structure to get into the tax exempt, meaning lower interest rate environment. You need a public issuer. And in this instance, as it was back in 2013, it would be the city of Sanford. But it is simply a pass-through conduit structure. The city is not responsible for or liable on any of the debt service obligation of this debt. It'll be entirely York County Community Action Corporation's responsibility. We'll be affirming that in our documentation. There'll be explicit language required by statute that it's not a debt or liability of the city, but only from, only repaid from revenues provided by York County Community Action. So that language, which is required by statute, will be incorporated into the underlying bond documents when the new loan is, documents and papered up. You also have on, on this call, the city's attorney in this matter, Zach Grandwine from Burnson Shore. His job will be, well, he could confirm this, but also his job will be to make sure when the documents are prepared, that that language is properly inserted and the city's protected as required by state law. So I'll pause there and if you have any questions, I'll go into more detail, but that's the basic sum and substance of it.
Does anyone have any questions? No, Steve? You're all set? I think we're all set. And we already had a first and a second. And all those in favor? Thank you very much. Wasn't unanimous? All right. 23, 241-01, in order to accept the bid from HA Stone &amp; Son in the amount of $61,857.50 to install approximately 1,127 feet of fencing at the Sanford Secos Regional Airport. And Allison, take it away.
Good evening. I'm Allison Navia. I'm the airport manager. This item is something that we had put into the budget, I think about three years ago. And then with the delays that came from COVID and all this, the construction costs escalating, the hangar never got built. So we, we didn't feel the necessity to do the project until that time. So things have changed, things have gotten better. The 10-unit hangar should start construction this, this month. So what we'd like to do is to move forward with moving of the fence and replacing that. So the bid did come in, as you see there, the $61,000 and change. There was $25,000 extra that they let us know it would cost to remove the old fence. That's a pretty high price, so that indicates that they, they're not interested in doing that work. So I just wanted to take the time to point out how great Matt and Joe are, that they can take on that extra work. So they're going to rejigger their schedule so that they can fit that in and we'll, we'll take down the fence ourselves to be able to save that money because we just, we just don't have enough money to, to pay the fence company to do that. So wanted to point that out. We'll be doing that work in-house. And then at some point in the next couple of months, HA Stone will come and they'll install the brand new fence for us.
Excellent. And we're moving that fence closer to the road?
Correct.
So there'd be less traffic along the edge of that area. So I think that'll cut down on the dust and everything else, which you don't really want around your airplanes. So thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the bid.
Jonathan, thank you.
Second.
Nate? Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm assuming the black racer snakes can migrate through the fence. They won't be held back.
Yeah, they can, they make their way underneath. We make little passages and have signage for them so that they know just exactly where to go.
That's what those little signs are. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. 23, 245-01, in order to review the proposed slate of officers as put forth in the Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee and to consider whether to put forth other candidates by petition. And if you might have noticed in your packet, you had these. And on the second page, there were three people who were listed on there. One was from Jay, one was from Gray, and one was from, and I welled? I've never heard of that community. So, and does anyone have any other comments? I think they've got down below, they've got some officers who are receiving one-year terms that end at a certain point. So I, I know you guys have had this multiple times. It's come across through an email. No one has expressed any desire to do this. So I'm just assuming you would really like to put forth the people who are willing to do this.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, all right. Good.
He does LPC, the rest of it's torture.
But, but the opportunity here tonight is that you have, the three individuals were put forward by the nominating committee and they, they put out multiple emails to the membership that they, they couldn't entice, right? They finally got three members, they put those forward. The opportunity you have now, and I've only seen this exercise one time in the many years that I've been doing this, is there, currently is a petition process that's open until Friday, July 7th. So if, if for some reason you didn't submit before for consideration, or if you had submitted before and you weren't selected by the nominating committee, you could get your town and four others, so five communities that would assign a majority of the municipal offices on there to support you, your name would then go into the election process. So when you see this ballot, I think in August of, of this year, your name would then appear under the petition process to be added to those three names that are already brought forward. So again, I've seen this exercise one time in about 30 years, so.
And I can tell you're really eager to do this. Did I already do a first and a second?
I'll make a motion to vote the slate.
Do we vote on it or do we just?
Well, no, you can't vote the slate tonight, but this is just a petition of just raising the awareness that you have the opportunity here. There's, there's no action items to be taken if nobody wants to put their name forward.
Talk about easy, huh? Don't even have to make a motion. Okay, moving right ahead. 23, 240-01, in order to review and adopt changes to the city council rules of procedure as proposed. And to let the public know that we had a whole workshop on this. proposed. And to let the public know that we had a whole workshop on this, where we spent hours going over. And we had to update our procedure part, and a lot of things were outdated. I would like to also point out that on the front page of that, we have multiple dates. And so, I'm proposing that we get rid of all those dates and just leave the one date that says the amended date on it, because we do keep the history of this. Because after a while, because you should do this least, at least annually, and sometimes twice a year, depending upon what comes up, the date page is going to be longer than the document itself if we don't just decide to put the last date that we updated. So, I need two things. One, we need a motion to accept this. And a second, and we also need, I think it would be an amendment then, to just change so there isn't dates, or can-
Oh, she actually ought to cross them out. It could be part of the motion.
Okay. So, we'll just make it as part of the motion?
It's part of the adjustment.
We didn't discuss that. So, I just wanted to make sure you knew why we-
No, Larissa's pushing it out. So, she got it in there.
Oh, perfect.
We talked about it.
Yeah. Larissa and I talked about it, realized how silly that was.
I'm teed close.
Okay. So, can I have a motion, please? Pete?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation to change city council rules of procedures as proposed.
All right. Thank you. A second. Nate?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. And going to the last thing of the evening. And this is 22500-01, in order to consider adding the Sanford rail trail to the linear park system. And Anne, you asked the last, one of our last meetings, if I would consider putting this on. So, we put this on. And one of the things that we were considering, thinking about this is, we're gonna- if we vote this through, it would preserve the trail system for all the nature stuff that it was intended. And in case you aren't aware, in early in the 90s, this was put forth as it was supposed to just be for walking, biking, you know, hiking, and that type of thing. And for a little while, we had allowed the ATVs on it. But then we realized it was totally destroying the trail itself. And it was going to cost a huge amount of money to renew it. And then they had a meeting that Steve was at. And the guy from the state who gives some of the grants said, he probably wouldn't be willing to keep giving grants for the ATV club to continue on this path. But he would do something that, consider they could apply for some grants that would go around. So, we thought not only could they apply for some grants, but if we put this at a linear trail, we would also be able to probably apply for some grants to fix it, because it does need to be fixed. So, that was a consideration for us to do. The other thing was, is at some point, if we vote on this to be the linear trail, linear park system to join that, we need to make an amendment. First of all, the police can go on with their ATVs anyway. And the trail committee who fixes it can go on to bring the equipment there to fix it.
And there's handicap accessibility.
And there's handicap accessibility, absolutely. But before next winter for the snowmobile people, because they actually help the trails in the wintertime, we need to look at the ordinance and to make it so that the snowmobiles can still use that, because they do not break up the trail. They actually make-
The way we do this, because the way our zoning reads, it would actually, were they part of the linear-
Oh, wait a minute.
If they're part of the linear park and motorized, they're out. But if we fix our ordinance and say for this section of the linear park, we can allow, that way they can pack it down for snowshoers and cross-country skis and stuff like that.
And I know we've talked about this multiple times. So, I won't keep going on and on and on, because I know we probably beat this to death by now. So, do I have a motion to change this to the linear park system? And knowing that we are going to have to visit our ordinance. So, do I have a motion, please? Pete?
I motion to go with the linear pack.
Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay. And discussion? Anne?
I just had a quick question. And I know our police department isn't with us anymore. But Steve, should this allow better enforceability of the misuse of the trails by the ATVs? So, I've actually historically been a, more of a proponent for mixed use of this trail, but recently was really a gas at some of the improper use of our trails and the treatment to property owners among the trails by those people. So, I just want to make sure that this will maybe increase our enforceability of improper use. Is that correct? Or just makes it really clear what the-
Yep. So, currently, we're in enforcement situation whereby our Parks and Rec Director, Brady Lloyd, is putting out improved signage out there before the department does the enforcement to make clear that the non-motorized activity is not, the motorized activity is not allowed. The department, we have the side-by-side ATV, we have the trained officers, we have an IF&amp;W grant to pay for that special duty time to do the trail enforcement. We're just finishing up the signage, because we've had multiple confirmations of ATVs riding out there on the trails. So, is that an issue of they're uninformed, that it's no longer motorized? Or are they doing it out of spite? Or are they just doing it because they're just going to ride regardless, right? So, there's all of that. Does it increase our ability to enforce? There again, too. It's about notification as to what the trail is or is not. And then we're going to go out and enforce. So, not differently than right now, you have passed the policy that it's non-motorized, period, with the allowance from, I believe, December through April for snowmobiles as defined, right? So, ATVs are defined by, under state law. Snowmobiles are defined under state law. So, I don't know that it improves your ability to enforce. It's just, you're going to be under a different guidance for the enforcement. My interpretation is that the linear park system, the intent of that is, it does become part of your park system itself, your parks, which are non-motorized, period. So, if you're going to make an exception for the snowmobiles, you've got to physically break that out at a later point in time beyond this. It does, the park system does seem to fit better with the conservation nature when you look at the significant assets that were listed out in the narratives, as far as the conservation land that this passes through and its connectivity to it and such under that is perhaps more in standing with what all of that, those growing facilities are. So, I just would, that's the only caution I would throw out there, that if you're, you adopted it as part of the linear park system, and you want snowmobiles there next winter, you need to make that exception. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, Pete?
Yeah, just so the public doesn't have any misconceptions, we're not anti-ATV. If Steve could maybe talk about what we got going on from Lebanon and a little bit of Sanford, to understand that we're not anti-ATVs. If you have them, register them, enjoy them. We're going to find a way for you.
So, the prior work, I was trying to look up my notes here. Yep, I know it's there. But so, the last meeting that we had with the state from the Department of Ag and Conservation, I can't remember the gentleman's name. I apologize for that. But he's in charge of the, not in the Southern Maine region, but for all of the state.
Brian Bronson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bronson. So, he indicated that he would not support any further grant money going into the rail trail, specific to ATV activity, because the town has not, does not support that in its current form. His other observation was that the overburdens or the overabuse or the damage that's been caused during the COVID years was a factor of the rail trail system for what they call the power line trail in Lebanon, the large power line trail that can take you all the way up through to Gray. They had lost the Lebanon section. It had been closed down. And the state holds, my understanding is the state holds the lease, the right-of-way with Central Maine power to utilize that area. It had gotten deteriorated to the point that the power company said, that's it. They shut them down. So, Mr. Bronson felt that the overburdens on the activity on the rail trail was partially because of, that trail had been closed. They still wanted someplace to ride. So, it was back and forth, out and back, back and forth repetitively. So, his support went to the town of Lebanon, making an application for funding to fix that portion, that rail trail system starting in Lebanon that could take you, then connect all the way up through to Gray, Maine, focus on that first, get that up and going, a potential parking ride associated with that and such, and then come back and review the Sanford rail trail at a later point in time, or other points of connectivity. I believe at the time, the council took the original action to demotorize the rail trail. They left open that portion from the depot to a power line trail that we later found out was not sanctioned, and that has been closed. So, I think the original thought was, you could park at the depot or the city's railroad avenue facility, take that portion of the trail over towards Shaw's Ridge, pick up that power line, and connect up to the other power line trail. But that has been closed as well. So, that connectivity has been lost.
Diane, do you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a few comments, if I may, if you'd allow me.
Yes, go ahead.
I can't say since 2015, I've been really happy with the process, with this whole topic of ATVs being taken away, access away from the rail trails. I'm really not happy with Mr. Carpenter, nor the comments that I've been hearing in the last, I don't know how many years, from the Trails Committee, because I do go to those meetings. I do participate. As far as changing the rail trail into a linear park, you're not going to like these comments. And I'm not going to be very popular with a lot of people. But we don't allow hunting in our parks. And if you make this a linear park, then you're going to have to do a lot of changing of the hunting laws in regards to the rail trail areas. And that's not going to go over well. Overall, I'm just not happy. I sold my ATV a long time ago because I saw this coming. I didn't believe it was correct. You're excluding a sport, a leisurely activity. I'm sorry, there are people that just couldn't adhere to the rules. And that's why it was lost. But for those of us that did, you've just excluded a bunch of people that did do it right. And so, I want you to really consider about, you know, hunting on a linear park. Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We've had a first and a second. And any other comments? Nate?
I guess it's more of a question, or just to sort of understand. Because I know, granted, I wasn't on the council at that point. But when this was initially decided that ATVs would not be able to use those trails, I believe it was in November or something around that line, that there was a, an idea of revisiting this back in November to discuss it. Can we maybe talk a little bit about why we need to move that timetable up? I understand there has been discussions about what's going on. But I think just for the public's notification, if they were closely following that meeting about why we're discussing it now as opposed to November.
Well, and I think what's happened is, really, their access to that trail has been shut down. That no longer can they go to the depot, get on there to this trail, because the CMP has shut down. Also, the person in the state who does the grant said, they're not going to give the ATV group grants to go across those trails anymore. And the people who have, they only were on those trails just for a very short time. And a lot of destruction happened. And it's not their fault. It's just the, how the ATVs are built. Their axles do this. And so, they crush up the ground, which has, and it's very costly. We're talking more than, I know they had raised something like between $15,000 and $16,000. That is a drop in the bucket. We're talking like $100,000 for the trail. And hundreds of thousands have, over the years, been dumped into that trail. And when we realized how much it was going to cost to bring this back up, the people who donate the money aren't going to keep donating the money if it keeps getting destroyed by the ATVs going across it. Also, the other end of this trail, we have now found, is also closed down to them. So, the best place for them to go is, we know there's a place that goes up and around now. They will still go across the tip of Sanford, but not on this trail. So, they do have an option to work with the state person to get grants. And they were encouraged to do that. And it sounded like the guy who was there encouraged them to also, you know, apply for the grants, to be able to go up and around. So, they would have other places. And it would open up, and I believe they can go almost all the way to Gray if they go that way. So, it actually gives them more accessibility instead of less. So, one of the reasons we're looking at this now is to encourage them to keep pursuing the grants while they still exist. So, that was my thinking, you know, behind, let's move ahead now. Plus, we also need to apply for some grants, because we have to fix the trail. So, Jonathan, did you have a question?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to follow up on Diane's question around, or comment around hunting. I don't know if you're aware, Steve, but is there any hunting that goes on in that area that would change based on this?
I don't have personal experience in that. When I hunt, I'm in the big woods. So-
Right. No, I get that.
But no, I'm aware that there's people that hunt out in those areas.
Okay.
I'm assuming they walk down the rail trail to get there and whatnot, or may be previously used an ATV to get out there and then park, park the ATV, and go into a deer stand or something of that nature. So-
It's not a long enough section that it's not unwalkable to get your deer.
No, I guess my question is, is would changing this to a linear park change their ability to go out there and do what they've been doing?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There's lots of private land along there that you'd be, yeah, that you'd be able to hunt on. There probably some of the land preserves they might not allow you to, but that would have been anyway.
They don't allow it anyway.
They don't allow it anyway.
Yep. Okay. Absolutely.
Well, I think you need to think about this. I think you need to talk about the fact that, okay, so I'm going to deer hunt. I got the 270, the four-power scope, it's long over my shoulder. I'm walking down the rail trail, which is part of the linear park system for all to enjoy. But I'm going to veer off in that, and I'm going to go deer hunting. Do you feel intimidated by that? Or does that bother you? It doesn't bother me. That's normal activity for me. But for some people, they don't care for that.
I saw some hunters out there just a few weeks ago. Believe it or not. It must have been, yeah, we saw some out there a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going to be adding some restriction that I was-
Anne, do you have a comment?
Well, I guess I'm just picturing our, trying to picture our parks regulations, if you will. But maybe the point being that we don't allow hunting in our parks.
Right, just on the trail.
Right. But as long as they're not actively hunting, it doesn't bar them from walking. I mean, I see people on Main Street with their firearms.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, are you all ready to vote? All right, all those in, what? I think the Trails Committee is here representing that. So, Lee does, Lee is a part of that Trails Committee. So, not anymore? No. Oh. Lee, are you a part of the Trails Committee?
I'm a former member and a former chair. I'm on the-
Okay, so we have-
Circle Sanford right now.
Okay. So, we have Hazen here at this point. Hazen, come on up. Hazen, I feel like I need to get your autograph. I saw you on TV tonight.
I don't want to get carried away, but I have to say something. Of course, when we started the trails, the Sanford Trail System in 99, we were the first to develop the rail trail. And at that time, a few people had ATVs that lived near the trail. We let them on. By 2010, it was getting overrun. People were complaining. Neighbors were complaining. The trail was getting damaged. By 2015, it was being destroyed. And we came to the council, and they told us to do something about it. We did. We asked the ADV club to get bombed, and they did. And that didn't happen. That didn't work. We came back to the council again. again, the council selected a committee, the committee worked on it, and that didn't work. The trail has been destroyed, and we have proven that as long as ATVs are in there, you will never, ever keep that trail up, it'll always be destroyed, it's a fact. And it's either gonna be an ATV trail or a Sanford trail. And when we developed it, it was a Sanford trail for hiking, biking, cross-country skiing, to enjoy nature, to see wildlife at its best, flowers, bird life, the beautiful nature out there. And that's what it needs to be. And you will never, never have a trail out there if ATVs are in. Now, as far as the snowmobiles, they were the first to come out there and help us when we did that. They helped us put in gates. I worked up there with a snowmobile club on the Lebanon Line for days, fixing a rail trail. They police the rail trail, they speak to every landowner that go off the rail trail on, and they get permission. They grade the trail, and people go out in the winter, cross-country ski, hike, bike, with mountain bikes and everything. So they help us on the trail. But this deserves to be kept for a nature trail for Sanford. Now, there's a lot to be done. For instance, right now, people that own land on both sides have permission to cross the rail trail. Things like that, we've got to address. So I would like to see our Trails Committee, who's been involved in this all this time, and Parks and Rec, sit down with Brady, and we come up with a plan, and, you know, requirements, rules, and regulations for that, which would include hunting, you know, people crossing and things like that. So if you give us an opportunity to do that, appreciate it. The other thing is, I hope you understand that we've put a lot of money in this, and we're not a lot of money, but a lot of volunteer hours. And in order to bring this trail back, I told you before, you're looking, I said 110, you're probably 150,000 now. And I hope that the city will see fit to give money over and above what we have for Trails, to put this back where it ought to, where it should be. After that, our Trails Committee, each year out of our budget, can maintain that for a few thousand dollars. This rail trail is a great asset. And I have nothing against ATVs, but it's either gonna be an ATV trail, destroyed forever, destroyed wildlife, and everything else, and piss people off, or it's gonna be a trail that was designed for a nature trail to last for Sanford forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazen. Okay, Lee?
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Brink. I wanted to talk about what our trail system can become. I'm a former member of the Trails Committee, former chair, and now in Cycle Sanford Group. I want to thank you first for taking all the time and consideration that you're giving the rail trail, because it is much deserved. But what I feel that the trail system needs right now, and Hazen just touched on it, is an investment worthy of what the valuable asset that our trail system is. Right now, sadly, it's very poorly maintained. It should be a real draw for the town, but right now, it's not. Sanford is surrounded by tourism, and with some notable exceptions, we've never really tried to get a piece of the tourism dollar, but we could very easily. We have a series of attractions in our town that are united by our trail network. We've got a downtown pond with some parkland nearby. We have a walkable farm belt, 10 farms up there. We have a couple of very scenic swimming holes on the river. We have one of the state's top birding hotspots in our town at the, at the birding ponds. We have the oldest woolen mill in the state of Maine, continuously operating. And we have, you know, lots of unbroken woods and unique natural areas. These are all like very quintessential Maine experiences, and we basically have them, you know, right within our town, all within walking distance. I think we should, we capitalize on that. We have Maine sort of without the drive, without the driving. That would be a good tagline for the city. This is, this is a vision of what our trail system can become. If you designate the rail trail as a linear park, we've got the potential to make this a really remarkable asset. We have a backbone trail running east-west, which is the rail trail, and then we have a backbone trail running north-south that intersects. And this, this is, you know, just something that nobody else in the state of Maine has, and it's a chance for us to get a piece of the tourism dollars. 10 miles of smooth, you know, wide trail, and lots of businesses already on it. We've got a deli, a diner, a tavern, an ice cream shop, and a barbecue shop, all on our rail trail right now, if we, I mean, on our trail network, not the rail trail. If we, if we can upgrade it, I think it's gonna activate more business, particularly in the downtown. But, as I mentioned, our trail system, and I'm not just talking about the rail trail, I'm talking about throughout the town is in, you know, very unmaintained condition, and some of it's kind of, if you get out there, you'll be kind of shocked at some of the conditions. We have locked gates across our trail system, that people have to walk around into the woods to get around. We have gullies running down the middle of some of our trails.
Um, Lee, your time, could you wrap it up in about 30 seconds?
Um, yeah, I just want to say that the Mouse and Promenade is gonna bring people into town. My big fear is that they're gonna take, you know, they're gonna explore our trail system, they're gonna take one look around and say, I don't need to come back here. And they'll tell their friends, don't bother. We have two years to, you know, get our act together. We're not ready for this yet. I feel like if we can take the next two years to bring our trail system up to the standard where our parks are, which are phenomenal, I think that we can then take advantage of the tourism that's surrounding us.
Thank you, Lee. All right.
One more thing for me. We did offer this, the club, the ATV club, access to the depot, if they wanted it, as long as they'd maintain the trail. But I think we should speak to the owner of the depot first, because I, let me tell you, since this has happened, and we banned ATVs, I've just gone in, I've become his friend before I wasn't. So I think he's happy they're not there, I don't know, I don't dare say anything. But I don't think he wants them there anyway.
All right. Thank you, Hazen. All right, are ready for a vote? All those in favor? Four? Four, five? One, two, okay, five. And all those opposed? One. All right, thank you. So moved. Okay, moving right along. Counselor comments, any comments? Anyone have a comment they would like to do? Anne, you had an exciting evening.
I was gonna give somebody else a chance, but we have to congratulate the class of 2023. Graduation's tomorrow, the weather, thank you to whoever controls the weather in the world.
Looking better.
Is looking better. So hopefully, we're outside, so we, us kind of tertiary friends and family can be there to clap and cheer them on. And then I just want to share, I had the opportunity to go to the spring sports banquet this past week, and boy, two things jumped out at me. One, I felt my age, because across the stage, every kiddo's name who was called was like a classmates kiddo of mine, and we're getting really old, I think. But it was really great to see all of our student athletes, the tremendous amount of academic achievement awards within our athletes, which is exciting to see, and just great stories about camaraderie and good team sportsmanship, and it was just really a fun event to check out. So, that's it.
Thank you. Pete?
Yes, I'd like to say sorry, we lost a childhood friend, a lot of us knew him, for Steve Lynn Court, and he was a good man. And it's just a shame to see a very good person check out early. So, to my, my heart goes out to his wife Esther and his family and kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Nate?
So I made this announcement last meeting, but I'll make it now. June 9th is the opening night of the Sanford Mainers. Everyone, please come, it'd be a great time. I know there are other events going on there as well, so if you don't come to our opening night, there's plenty other things to do around the town this weekend, around the city this weekend, and I encourage you all to go out and support your community.
Oh, I think they should go to Sanford Mainers. The new concession manager has added chocolate chip cookies to the dessert menu. I'm just saying.
That was good.
Warm, chocolate chip cookies. And it'll be a little cool, so that warm chocolate chip cookie will taste very good.
That's right.
Okay, I happen to know that Steve loves chocolate chip cookies.
He's excited as he gets.
Yeah.
He's gonna be to do a lot of chocolate chip cookies.
Any other comments? All right, future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda? Remember, the more you put on, the longer we go, so...
I was trying to think of someone.
And you can always call me, too. So, any other, any other agenda items that you can think of right now? All right, good. Well, we will adjourn...